Well hello again, thank you for joining me for this study of Paul's Letter to the Romans, the letter that changed the world. I've been saying "good evening" as we get these things started, but since we are double booking these things, Wednesday evenings and Sunday mornings, I don't want to throw off my Sunday morning viewers and make them say, "Well, did I get this all wrong?" So hello, thank you for joining me for this study in Paul's Letter to the Romans, as I always refer to it, the letter that changed the world, because it is the letter that changed the world. Let me also begin with this disclaimer, I apologize for my appearance right off the bat, any more than usual that is. I had my final close encounter with my favorite dermatologist last week, and I think I'm through putting her children through school, now I'm working on putting her grandchildren through school. But, the good news is, this is the last time I have to do this blue light special on my face to burn off precancer stuff, and again, it is all precancerous, I've got no, I've got nothing real problematic at this point, I do this so that I won't have that, and so if I look a little more blotchy, a little scaly, and certainly a little more rugged, I apologize. I hopefully will have this all gone by the time you see me Sunday morning, although if you're watching this Sunday morning, that may not work, anyway, you get the idea, so thanks for joining me tonight, and I hope that my appearance doesn't scare you off of this study. We're in Paul's Letter to the Romans, chapter 4, verses 13 through 25, we're getting there? So let's begin as always with a burger prayer. Our Lord and our God, we thank you very much for this privilege we have, to look into this portion of your Word, this really deep, in many ways, complex and difficult, letter, Paul's Letter to the Romans. But Lord, you had him, you caused your servant Paul to write this, and you caused him to write it the way he did, to whom he did, and Lord, you had your reasons, and so we believe, through the eyes of faith, that we can understand it at least at some level as well. Lord, you've told us in Scripture, in 1 Corinthians 2, that we have the mind of Christ, if we know Jesus as Lord, we have the mind of Christ, so I pray now that you would help us to activate it, to apply it to this study of your Word, and that when we are through this study this evening, this morning, that we will not only know more, but we'll be more like Jesus, the Living Word, in whose name I pray, amen. Amen. I also popped a lozenge right before we started, because I know that so often as I talk, I get real crudded up, that's a very technical medical term, a real crudded up, and I have to end up clearing my throat a lot, so I'm hoping not to do that tonight, but I forgot to finish off with the lozenge before we started, so. If you're still with me, you're very gracious and patient, thank you very much. I would say I'm not normally this ill-prepared to get started, but I often am. So with that said, I will show you where we are in Paul's Letter to the Romans, chapter 4, verses 13 through 25, let me show you where we are on the outline. We've had the introduction, "The theme, the one who is righteous by faith shall live," there in verses 16 and 17 in chapter 1, and then from chapter 1, verse 18, through this portion of the night, Paul has been expositing, or expounding upon, elaborating upon, explaining what he means by "the one who is righteous by faith." And so tonight, as we finish, you know, I just could keep saying that, so you Sunday morning viewers, forgive me, as we finish this session tonight, we will turn a major corner for next time, as we get into chapter 5, verses 1 on through the end of chapter 8, and this is such a great study. So with that, let's read it together. Whoops. Before I do that, let me touch on something that Doug Mu, who's a great theologian out of Dallas says, and yes, that is the man's name. "The theme of promise binds this entire section together in unity, used for the first time in Romans here, the noun 'promise,' and for those of you who are not Greek scholars, and I'm not either, but I know a little bit, enough to be dangerous, the noun 'promise,' epongalia, occurs four times, verses 13, 14, 16, and 20, and the verb 'promise,' epongelo, occurs once." Now, I only put that up there, first of all, because some of you I know like, when I get into some of these depths, that you like to see what the original language looked like, although believe me when I tell you, it was not anywhere near that neat in the original manuscripts, sorry, in the manuscripts that we've got, the copies of Paul's letter, but that's what the Greek language looks like. And you know, if you look at that, you can pick out some of the letters, if it's Hebrew, you can't pick out anything, in Greek, you can pick out some of the letters, so that's what it looks like, that's what the Greek language looks like. And now, let's read Paul's Letter to the Romans, once again, I use the New American Standard Translation, you feel free to use whatever translation that you like best, that you're most comfortable with. Paul writes, "For the promise to Abraham or to his descendants that he would be heir of the world was not through the law, but through the righteousness of faith; for those who are of the law are heirs, faith is made void, and the promise is nullified; for the law brings about wrath; for where there is no law, there is also no violation. For this reason it is by faith, in order that it may be in accordance with grace, so that the promise will be guaranteed to all the descendants, not only to those who are of the law, but also to those who are of the faith of Abraham, who is the Father of us all, as is written, 'A father of many nations have I made you, in the presence of him whom he believed, even God, who gives life to the dead, and calls into being that which does not exist.' In hope against hope, he believed, so he might become a father of many nations according to that which had been spoken, so shall your descendants be. Without becoming weak in faith, he contemplated his own body, now as good as dead since he was about a hundred years old, in the deadness of Sarah's womb; yet with respect to the promise of God, he did not waver in unbelief, but grew strong in faith, giving glory to God, and being fully assured that what God had promised, he was able also to perform. Therefore it was also credited to him as righteousness. Now not for his sake only was it written that it is credited to him, but for our sake also, to whom it will be credited, as those who believe in him..." Here I go again, sorry folks, "...as those who believe in him, who raised Jesus our Lord from the dead, he who was delivered over because of our transgressions, and was raised because of our justification." For those of you who haven't been with me for very long, I do apologize, I have some kind of allergies, I don't know what to do, it triggers my sinuses and causes me to do this a lot when I talk a lot. I know the answer would be, "Don't talk so much," but it's kind of what I do for a living, so bear with me please, and I'll try not to do it if I can possibly help it. And if you want to pray that God would heal me with whatever I'm allergic to, and get rid of this sinus stuff I have to fight, I'm good with that, I'd appreciate that. Alright, so, what is Paul talking about here? Those who are of the law, those who are of faith, and how the promise is fulfilled both. Well, again, this is review, but for those of you who are new to us for this session, or newer to us, those who are of the law are the Jews. Paul is writing to the churches in Rome, house churches, that he has never been there, yet, he will get there at the end of his life, at the very end of his life, Paul's never been to Rome yet, he doesn't know any of these people, other than the emissary that he sends back and forth, and so he's had to make his credentials known to them, that he is very Jewish himself, I mean, he's, again, I know this is review for those of you who've been with me, but look at Romans chap, I'm sorry, Philippians chapter 3, you get Paul's credentials, as to being how very Jewish he is, and a scholar of the law, he was a Pharisee, calls himself a Pharisee of Pharisees. So he's writing to his fellow Jews, to say, "Look, I'm not some outsider throwing bombs in over the walls of the people of Israel, no, I'm one of you." And I'm telling you, this applies to us, and this is to his Gentile fellow Christians in Rome, in the different house churches, he says, "And this applies to you too, even though you aren't Jewish, and you're not quote, 'of the law,' you are not part of God's old covenant people of Israel, that it's alright, this promise still applies to you as well." At that point, many Gentiles had converted to Judaism, and so they are converted Jews, who then received Jesus as Messiah, but many of them weren't. And Paul wants them to know, this applies to both those who are Jews, those who are Gentiles, and you want to say somewhere in between, to those who are Gentiles by birth, but have converted into Judaism. So Paul says, "This covers everybody, these promises cover everybody." Now, I want to read another quote to you, this is from John Stott, again, the, not, passed away, I'm going to say within the last four or five years, he was an Anglican rector in London, and a beautiful, beautiful writer, a prolific writer, lifelong bachelor, so he must have just studied and preached and written, and he provides such beautiful commentary on the Book of Romans, so I want to read a quote to you from John Stott, it's rather lengthy, but it's, I think, worth your listening to, and just soaking in the beauty of what he says here. Alright, here we go. John Stott, "To our initial astonishment, Paul portrays God's promise as being that Abraham would be heir of the world; yet in the Genesis text, Abraham was promised Canaan, north, south, east, and west, of where he was standing," Genesis 13, "whose boundaries were later delineated. How then did the land become the world? It is partly that as a general principle, the fulfillment of biblical prophecy has always transcended the categories in which it was originally given." Let me stop here and just give an analogy that I picked up from Richard Pratt, who was my best seminary professor, Reform Theological Seminary in Orlando. If you know Richard, don't tell him I said that, okay, because it makes him, gives him a really big ego, and makes him really hard to deal with. Richard gave us this analogy, and I think it's a really good, I think I got it right, anyway. Think of skipping stones across the surface of a pond or a lake, you've done that before, I hope you have, if not, please, do not pass go, do not collect $200, go outside and skip a rock across a flat surface of a still body of water, right? And it hits once, depending on how well you threw it, and how flat the surface you used of the rock that you used, right? It hits once, and it'll hit again, and it'll hit again, and if you're really good, you might get even a fourth or a fifth skim out of, skip out of it. Biblical prophecy is sort of that way, there's an initial, immediate, or near immediate fulfillment of it, something happens within short range of the prophecy, and then there's usually a further fulfillment of it, could be later on, in the life of the people of Israel, or in the church, or it could be in the first coming of Christ, the incarnation of Christ, and then quite often, there's a further fulfillment of it, somewhere in church history, or in the end times, even the second coming of Christ. So if you think of biblical prophecy that way, one immediate fulfillment, then a second fulfillment in the incarnation of Christ, and then a third one maybe in the end times, and that's how, that's the nature of biblical prophecy. So if you wonder, "Which does it mean?", the answer, "Well, yes, it probably means all three, or four, or five." I can't think of anything that has four or five fulfillments, but you get the idea, there are different levels of, different realms of fulfillment to biblical prophecy. Back to John Stott. "As a general principle, the fulfillment of biblical prophecy has always transcended the categories in which it was originally given. It is partly that God made the subsidiary promises, that through Abraham's innumerable posterity..." That means he had a lot of children, and grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. "...all nations on earth would be blessed, all nations on earth would be blessed," no other references in Genesis. "The third reason for Paul's statement that Abraham would inherit the world is surely messianic. As soon as Abraham's seed was identified as the Messiah, it was further acknowledged that he would exercise a universal dominion." Look at Psalm 2:8, look at Isaiah 9:7. "Further, his people are his fellow heirs, which is why in the meek will inherit the earth, and why in and through Christ all things are ours, including the world." Isn't that beautiful? There's an immediate fulfillment, a secondary fulfillment, and there's an ultimate fulfillment in the coming of Christ, when we as his people do indeed inherit the earth. My friend Jerry Reed, excuse me, Dr. Reed, he makes me call him that now, if you guys know Jerry, you realize, he never makes me call him that, but I like to give him a hard time, because he always gives me one, seems fair. So Jerry and I were talking today about the new heavens and the new earth, and something I had not thought a great deal about for most of my Christian life. And a couple of years ago, in preaching through some of the more difficult passages of Scripture, and maybe the lesser understood passages of Scripture, I tackled this issue, what the new heavens and the new earth are going to be like, and it was so mind-blowing for me, how did I miss this all these years? I mean, I've been reading the Bible for 50 years, I think literally, almost, and I've been studying it seriously for most of the time, I've been to seminary twice, how did I miss the beauty of what happens in the new heavens and the new earth? Heaven is not our final destination. I'm sure it's wonderful, I'm sure it's beyond our ability to imagine, I think that's why in the Revelation, and other places where we see glimpses of heaven, I think the biblical writers, the Holy Spirit said, "Look, you can't begin to understand how beautiful and how glorious heaven is, you don't even have a language for it." So I'll tell you like this, streets of gold and gates with all these beautiful, beautiful gems in them, and the gate posts, and the gates themselves are pearl, that's why we call them pearly gates, right? And it's got this beautiful stream running through the middle of it, and a tree of life in the middle of it, and that may be literally exactly what it's like, or maybe just, "Look, this is an idea, but you can't grasp how beautiful this is." So think of it like this, "Well, heaven's great, I want to say I can't wait to see it, but no, I can wait, I've got a few things I need to do first, a couple more kids to help get, you know, on their feet, so forth. I've got a grandchild I'd like to see grow up and do some, do some great things." Anyway, I'm anxious to see heaven, and I'm sure it's going to be beyond imagination, but that's not where we end up, because at some point, the new Jerusalem comes down out of heaven like a bride, beautifully adorned for her husband, and heaven and earth meet, they kiss, and we have a new heaven and a new earth, planet earth, we're going to recognize it again, it's going to be way beyond anything we've ever seen, the most beautiful place you've ever seen in the world, we'll pale in comparison, but we're going to have a new heaven, a new earth, we're going to see, those of you who live in South Florida, we're going to see Florida, the way Ponce de León and the original explorers saw it, or better, the way the Seminole, the Tocasht Indians saw it, and you get the idea? We're going to see it in its unspoiled beauty, no high-rises, no highways, no turnbikes, we're going to see Florida the way it was meant to be, better than ever, and we're going to be the way we're supposed to be, glorified, and we'll recognize each other too, and it's just, it's going to be glorious, it's going to be glorious. So anyway, that's what we're promised as believers, that God's kingdom will expand forever, all the nations in the world will be blessed through the offspring of Abraham, his genetic offspring, the Jews, who have been a blessing to the world far beyond their numbers, and his spiritual offspring, Christians, who are his heirs by faith, the Church of Jesus Christ has been a blessing to the world far beyond our numbers. Yeah, both are flawed, Jews are flawed, Christians are flawed, I get it, but on balance, we've brought so much more good to the world, and so this promise gets fulfilled in the immediate, near-term, Abraham's inheritance of Canaan, and then beyond, the other nations of the world, and ultimately, into the new heavens and the new earth, it's going to be, it's going to be unbelievable, so believable, but unbelievably so, you get the idea? Think about that, get back to me if you have a problem with that. Alright, now, now, we transition from that opening line about the promises, now to the law. "So justification is not by works, nor by circumcision," as Paul has already established in the first half of this chapter, "then neither is it by law." So he abandons this lecture, if you will, some might call it a diatribe, in favor of very straightforward statements. In verse 13, "It wasn't through the law that Abraham received the promise." Why not? Well, it's real simple, because the law wasn't given until 430 years after Abraham, so he couldn't obey it, because it hadn't been given yet. He could obey it in principle, the spirit of the law, but there was no letter of the law, because Moses had not come down from the mountain with those two stone tablets, that's 430 years in the future. And so, law and promise belong to two different categories of thought, but in those two categories, law and promise are incompatible, because the law demands, it says, "you shall," and it demands our obedience to it, "you better, or else," right? But promise, the language of promise, which is God saying, "I will," demands that we believe. The law demands that we obey, the promise demands that we believe. Experience has shown us, both in the life of the people of the Old Testament, people of Israel, and in our own lives, that we don't do so well with the "thou shalt obey" bit, right? We just don't, we do not measure up, it's one of the functions of the law, is to show how far we fall short. So we don't do so well with the "thou shalt, and thou shalt not." You've seen those billboards that go up every now and then, that are purported to be God speaking to us, "Don't make me come down there," and the best one of all is the, "Which part of 'thou shalt not' did you not understand?" Well, basically, we either didn't understand, or didn't care, or just flat-out flagrantly disobeyed, a lot of them, maybe even all 10 at some point or another, and all of us disobey one or more of them, I'm sure every single day, if you're really spiritual, maybe every other day. So Jesus summarized them for us, "Love the Lord our God with all our hearts, soul, and mind, love our neighbors as ourselves." Well, how well do we do with that, those two, the summation of law, we don't do so well. So in the place, or succeeding the law, we get the promise, God says, "Okay, you can't, but I will. You failed to obey, now believe, now believe." And Abraham, of course, is the paradigm, the model of faith for us. The law had to come, in order to establish what God was like, what God is like, what his standards of holiness are, what we're supposed to do to live lives before this holy God, but then, when we fail to measure up to it, as we have ever since, that's when God said, "Okay, now I have to..." It's not like it was an afterthought with God, he knew this all along, that's when God said, "Okay, now I will take care of..." The obedience to the law you don't have, the righteousness of fulfillment, my son Jesus is going to do that for you. You couldn't obey the law, will you believe the promise? Francis Schaeffer says something that's just, I think, again, quite beautiful here, and I had never thought of it in these terms. Francis Schaeffer died in 1984, but his words still resonate to this day. If you don't know who he is, look him up online, and do yourself a favor, and maybe read his, some of his books, The God Who Was There, Escape from Reason, he's got a beautiful little book on the Bible, on the arts, not long, not as beautiful, anyway, just, if you think of it, look up Francis Schaeffer, maybe check out some of his books, I don't know that there's any video or recordings of him online, there may be, I just, I don't know, anyway, this is Francis Schaeffer. "On the Mount of Transfiguration," this is in Matthew 16, one of the best places to read it, also Luke 9, "On the Mount of Transfiguration Moses and Elijah came and talked with Jesus, and only one subject of conversation was great enough for such a moment. As Luke tells us, Moses and Elijah were talking to Christ about his approaching death. Why was this the topic of their conversation? Because Moses and Elijah, who had lived many centuries before Christ, needed him to die, so that they could be saved." Is that beautiful? Theologians and preachers, we love to speculate about, what was that conversation like between Moses, Elijah, and Jesus? We know that Moses representing the law, and Elijah representing the prophets, were there to point to Jesus, who is greater than, and the fulfillment of all the law and all the prophets, we know that, that's kindergarten theology, that's theology 101. But what was the conversation like? Moses and Elijah were there to say to Jesus, "We thank you that you've come to die for us, so that we can be saved." Beautiful. I've preached Matthew 16, and Mark 9, Luke 9, any number of times, and I've never thought of it that way, so thank you, St. Francis, not really, Francis Schaeffer, for your insights into this. So, the promise comes, not through the law, but through the righteousness of faith, and I realize I'm still basically only verse 13, so I'd better move along. "Abraham believed God, when the promise was made, he believed God would fulfill his promise, he had faith." And Paul says that it's faith, it's through faith, for this reason, that God's grace might stand. It's God's grace being realized through faith, and that promise that he gives us is a gift, it's not something we work for, it's not something we can earn, it's not something we can deserve, God doesn't owe us, certainly he doesn't owe us that, but it's by grace, the free gift of God. If the law and its works were necessary for all this, then it would not be a gift anymore, because it would be something we worked for, something that we deserve. And further, to get to his further purpose for gifting the promise, giving us the promise in place of working for it, is to guarantee its fulfillment. A little later on, verse 16, he says, "If its fulfillment depended on human works, it would never have come to pass." Come back to another beautiful message here from John Stott. "Verse 16 is a further example of the logic of language, as it brings together grace and faith. The fixed point is that God is gracious, and that salvation originates in His sheer grace alone. But in order that this may be so, our human response can only be faith, for grace gives, and faith takes. Grace gives, and faith takes. Faith's exclusive function is humbly to receive what grace offers." Grace gives, faith receives, I've used this analogy with you before, if you think of it as a tree, tree of life, if you will, grace is the roots, faith is a trunk, which grows out of the roots, sinks its roots deeply down into the soil of God's grace. Grace is the roots, faith is the trunk, and the branches and the fruit are our works, our acts of obedience. They come last. The trunk and the roots do not depend on the branches, and the branches don't depend on the fruit, it's the other way around. Fruit depends on the branches, the branches depend on the trunk, trunk depends on the roots, it's all of God's grace, from first to last. If you're old enough, you remember the ankle bones connected to the knee bone, yeah, okay, it's almost like that, not exactly, but grace is the inexhaustible source of ever-flowing living water that flows from the throne of God. Faith is the conduit, through which we access God's grace, and what grows out of that life-giving water all around... And what grows out of that life-giving water, all around it, are the, the fruit or fruits of our obedience and our righteousness, not the other way around. You can't work for it, you don't, you can't earn it. If you could, as you've heard me say many times before, if we could do it on our own, God would let us. He would never have sent His Son Jesus to die a horrible, horrible death like that in our place, if, if we could do it on our own. Again, if you've heard me say this before, please bear with me. I have four children. If the only, if, if you were in a jam, and you had to work really, really hard and do two or three or four jobs the rest of your life to get out of that jam, or I could sacrifice one of my children for you, I got news for you. You're going to be working really hard at two or three or four jobs the rest of your life, because you can't have any of my kids. There are days, no, not really. And not only you, with you and your whole family, your whole town, your whole country, if all of your lives depended on either working really, really hard for the rest of your lives, or I sacrifice one of my children, you're all going to have to work really hard. You can't have any of my kids. Not for you, not for everybody. So if it was possible for us to earn our salvation, for us to do enough works of righteousness, God would require us to do it. He would say, "Here's the Ten Commandments, read and heed. I'll see you at the finish line. I hope you do well enough to pass." Since all this requires perfection, God says, "You can't do it. If you could, I would let you, but since you can't, I will send My Son to absorb the wrath and the judgment that you deserve. And in exchange for that, by faith, through the grace, by, by grace through faith, you receive His righteousness." So He takes all your sin on Himself. He gives you His righteousness. And I know I've said this before, but it bears repeating, especially if you haven't been with me. That's the beauty and the horror, the horror and the beauty of the cross of Christ. And it's something that only, only the mind of God could have brought forth. None of us could possibly have ever imagined anything anywhere near as horribly beautiful as the cross of Jesus Christ. So Paul goes on to explain that neither works nor circumcision nor law have anything to do with Abraham's justification, because back in Genesis 15:6, we read how God credits Abraham's faith as righteousness. That's before circumcision, by at least 14 years, some commentators take longer. It's at least 14 years before circumcision, and it's 430 years before the law. So obviously, it can't be through the act or the work of circumcision or obedience to the law. Neither one of those has happened. It's just faith, that God looks at Abraham and says, "I'm going to credit this to you as righteousness." And the same applies to us to this very day. And then he moves on to, Paul does, the reasonableness of Abraham's faith. In other words, he doesn't say, "Can you believe," pardon the pun, clown words, "you believe what Abraham believed, what he had to believe to be righteous?" I mean, come on, really? Now let me say this. If you're a Christian, and you don't at least occasionally stop and say, this is... Think about what it is we've been told to believe. If you don't occasionally, at least once in a while, stop and say, "This is, this is so outrageous. This, this is so beyond my imagination. This is so, almost incomprehensible." If that never occurs to you every night, at least once in a while, you're not thinking very much about your faith. You're not thinking very much about your faith. I think Frederick Bittner was the one who said that, that faith isn't the person who wakes up every day and says, "Yep, I believe it," moves on. No, faith is the person who wakes up at least occasionally and says, "I, I can't believe this, but I'm going to believe it. I can't believe this, but I'm going to believe that." That's the person who's, who's testing his faith, who's, who's really, who's really sounding out his faith. And it's a reasonable faith. Faith in Christ goes beyond reason. It does not go against it. It goes beyond reason, does not go against it. Faith in Christ, we take everything we know to be true about life and the world and the universe, we take it as far as we can, we think as, as deeply as we possibly can about it. Then we come to the end of it, and God says, "Okay, I'll take it from there. By the way, you didn't get very far on your own. God says, "I'll take it from there. Now let me tell you about how My Son Jesus had to come and to pay the price for your sins." Reason alone would never get us that point. I think reason alone would get us to the fact that there has to be a Creator. I think atheists are, are committing intellectual suicide to believe that this is all just one big cosmic accident. And they cannot live consistently with their unbelief, can't. That's for another lecture. Victor probably covered that in the Apologetics series, if you want to go back and get that on our website, or on Facebook. Reason alone should be able to get you to believe in God. Psalm 19 again. "The heavens are telling of the glory of God, and their expanses declaring the work of His hands. Day to day pours forth speech, and night to night reveals knowledge." Psalm 14:1, "The fool has said in his heart, 'There is no God.'" Okay, so I believe reason will get you to believe in God, but reason alone will not get you to faith in Christ as our Messiah, our Redeemer, our Savior, our atoning sacrifice. For that, we need God's revelation. There's general revelation and special revelation. We need special revelation for faith in Christ. So it's still a reasonable thing to do. There is a ferocious, ferocious logic to New Testament theology, to biblical theology. There's a ferocious logic to Reform theology, which is one of the reasons I'm here. I'm here because God called me to be here. But one of the things that brought me here, in my own feeble attempts, was that, and the logic of this is just almost inescapable. If you can allow for the fact that we are radically and pervasively to pray, radically and pervasively sinful, that sin has impacted every aspect of our lives, if you can, if you can get to that, we are fallen intellectually, emotionally, volitionally, physically, attitudinally, behaviorally, every other way. If you can get to that, then the rest of it just kind of clicks in, in line for you. We're dead in our trespasses and sins. Therefore, God has to come along and breathe the breath of life into us, just as surely as He did to Adam as the first man, back in Genesis, chapter 2, verse 7. All right, I'm, I'm a little far afield here. I better move on, or we won't get through the rest of chapter four. So he says it's a reasonable, Paul gets to the reasonableness of our faith in Christ, because he talks about God's power and God's willingness. In verse 17, the latter part of verse 17, he points those both out, and he said, "Well, He raises the dead." Talks about resurrection. "And He brings something out of nothing." Talks about creation. So of course He has the power. Jeremiah says in 32:17, "Nothing is too hard for you." And thus, Paul says, "Abraham was fully persuaded that God had the power to do what he had promised. And his persuasion was wholly reasonable." And then he gives, and I think this is a, I, I love the phrase here, "He brings forth that which was not." He brings forth into existence that which did not exist before. So he, God has the power to speak into existence something that doesn't exist before. That's what Genesis 1 is all about. Creations like to use the Latin phrase, "God creates ex nihilo." Ex nihilo, that means out of nothing. I don't want to under-say "out of nothing," but it sounds much more erudite when you say it in Latin. And yes, that's all I remember in my Latin classes. Miss Denbridge, Miss Fitzgibbon somewhere, I hope you're, I hope you're smiling again. God creates ex nihilo, out of nothing. He speaks and it exists. And then He brings order out of chaos. And both those things are inherent in the nature of God, the omniscient and the omnipotent. More by his omnipotence, sorry, got my "omn" wrong there. God, the omnipotent. He speaks and it comes into existence. He speaks and it orders, we bring order out of chaos. And that's what Genesis 1 and on into chapter 2 are all about. So Doug Moo goes on to say, and yes, that is the man's name, that is the theologian Doug Moo's name. He says, "In Abraham's case, God revealed this power in creating life in the dead womb of Sarah." Remember, Sarah was about 85 years old. Maybe, she may have been 90, I need to check that. Yeah, she was about 90 when she gave birth to Isaac. Pretty amazing, 90-year-old woman. Now, they lived longer than we do back then, but that was still, I hope this is not going to get me in trouble with the, the Thought Police and the, and the wokeness crowd, but that was no spring chicken even back then. So in Abraham's case, God revealed His, this power in creating life in the dead womb of Sarah. For us, this power of God is manifested in His raising from the dead, Jesus our Lord. So the question for us is not, "Can God do something?" The question is, "Will He do it?" And our very limited and human understanding, we lose sight of this a lot of time, "God, could you? God, if it's possible, God..." What does Jesus say? "With God, all things are possible." We have a hard time with that, because quite often, we pray and we don't see it happen. We begin to wonder if God can do certain things. Again, a little quick excursion. It is not true that God can do anything. It is not true. Yes, He's omnipotent, but He cannot, He cannot violate His own omnipotence. The old, "Can God make a rock so big he can't pick it up?" No, He cannot, because that would be to violate His own nature as an omnipotent God, an all-powerful God. So no, God cannot violate His own character. He cannot lie. He cannot break a promise. So no, it's not true that God can do anything. He cannot violate His own nature. But if it's consistent with His own nature, such as creating out of nothing, bringing life out of the dead, bringing order out of chaos, well, yes, then, then He can do anything as long as it's consistent with His nature, right? So I have a habit of saying, "Right?" Like you're going to answer me, but that's my way of questioning, just to make sure you're staying with me. You still with me out there? Yeah, you, all right, come on, wake up. All right, so God's creative power, His ability to create out of nothing, is not lost on Paul as he's, as he's teaching it to his, his fellow Christians there in Rome, because it wasn't lost on Abraham. Abraham was able to believe God, that God could bring life out of the barren womb of his, of his wife Sarah. So in God's case, God revealed the power in creating life, I'm sorry, in Abraham's case, God, did I say that right? God revealed the power in creating life in the dead womb of Sarah. For us, I'm repeating Dr. Moo here. For us, the power of God is manifested in His raising from the dead, Jesus our Lord. So the question for us is not, "Can God do something?" The question is, "Will He?" And that's where we struggle. We'll say, "If it's God's will," well, that's a perfectly legitimate thing to say, but in the back of our minds, we're wondering, "Will He? Is He willing?" And we struggle with that. And we pray for our non-Christian friends and neighbors. Can God save them? Of course He can. Will He save them? We don't know. And our struggle, mine anyways, is, "God, why would you not?" Why would you, I love so-and-so. And I'm asking you. And I've prayed for some people I know for years, even decades, and I haven't seen them come to Christ yet. Some say, "God, why would you not?" And I don't have an answer for you, and I wish I did. It's not that He can't, sometimes He's not willing. He is able. He's not only willing. But we can pray that way. And that's, that's where our struggle is. Back to Pastor Stott. "This firm conviction about the power of God was what enabled Abraham to believe, both against all hope and in hope at the same time. And God promised him that His descendants would be as many as the stars, although at that time, he and Sarah did not have even a single child. It was at one and the same time, an act of creation and resurrection." Isn't that beautiful? Creation and resurrection, all at one time for Abraham. There's so much more to that story, but I can't tell you. Now, if you want, Abraham's story begins at the end of Genesis 11, really kicks into gear in chapter 12, runs through Genesis 25. And there's such beautiful stories, some of those powerful and well-known stories in the world. Do, you ought to yourself to read them. They're, 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 they're very inspiring. I would encourage you to. So whether people keep their promises, other people keep their promises to us or not, depends on their ability to do it and their willingness. With God, not so. We know He's able. The only question is, "Will He do it?" So again, Abraham's struggle, Paul passes on to the Roman Christians there, is, is these are the two areas we struggle with. Can God do it? Will He do it? Well, we know He can, then the question becomes, "Will He?" So in hope and against all hope, Abraham does believe God at, again, in an amazing way. I'm like, "Come on, let's face it. Yes, they lived longer back then, but if you're 100 years old and your wife is 90, and God's been promising you for about a quarter of a century at that point, that you're going to have not just a child, but you're going to have children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren, so many, they're like the stars in the sky, if you can count them, and like the sand on the seashore. And in them, all the world, nations in the world will be blessed." Could you believe that? I don't know that I could. At that age, I don't know that I could. Abraham did. And God pronounced it to him as blessed. He is the Father of those who have faith. And again, I got to rush a little bit, because I spent too much time talking about other things that were good, but spent too long on... Francis Schaeffer again. "Each time he was tested, Abraham believed God's promise." But if Abraham was ever going to have descendants so numerous, he first had to have one. And there's a beautiful application there. That applies to us as well, that Abraham believed God would give him a son to make him the father of many nations. Later on, he's going to believe that God could raise him from the dead. You can read about that in Genesis, chapter 22. But he first had to believe he's going to have one. When people, when you're sharing your faith in Christ with other people, then it's good to, to pick out some specific promises of God, not a general, "Do you believe in God? Now that's great. Do you believe in Jesus? That's great." How about some specifics? Do you believe that Christ died for your sins, that you're a sinner in need of God's saving grace? Yes, no? Do you, so yes? Do you believe Christ died for your sins? Yes. Do you want Him to be your Savior? Yes. Be specific. There's too much generic evangelism, I think, for us to be confident with it. So anyway, believe God for something specific. And yeah, I'm, I'm kind of rushing, because I realize the time's gotten away from me. Sorry about that. Let a preacher talk, and he'll talk. Especially when there's none of you around to ask me questions or get me off the subject any more than I have. I really miss you guys. That's not just preacher talk. I'm so tired of talking into a camera and not being able to see you all, whether it's Wednesday night, Sunday morning, whatever. I can't wait till we can start gathering again. No, I don't know when yet, but Lord willing, hopefully soon. Maybe by the time you see this on Sunday morning, we will be gathering. I don't know. God knows, and the rest of us are just guessing. So again, I'm jumping down to the end, and I'm kind of fast-tracking things. At the end of chapter four, God, of God, Paul talks about Jesus being raised, being raised from the dead for our justification. Well, didn't He die for our justification? And we get different scholars, different theologians weighing in on that. But for Paul, the entire chapter, chapter four, is basically a long treatment of, I want to say, a long exposition of Genesis 15:6, Abraham's faith, that God credited to him as righteousness. And so in all that, Paul says, "We need to include the, the resurrection of Christ as part of our justification as well." It's not merely the initial event of salvation, but it also includes our, our adoption into God's family, our sanctification, our final glorification. Did Abraham understand all that at the time? I'm sure he didn't. God's revelation hadn't revealed all that to him, but He's revealed it to us. We stand on the shoulders of Abraham and other giants, and so we know more about them than they did, about God than they did. Not because we're better or bigger or more spiritual, but because we have them to build on, all the law and all the prophets and the Gospels and the Epistles, and oh yeah, Jesus Himself. So we get to understand so much more than they were privileged to understand. So, okay, I'm looking at the clock and saying, "I got to wrap this up," and I wish I didn't have to, but I do. So let me remind you of something I said to you last time, okay? Because if you didn't hear it, you need to, and if you did, you need to hear it again. All right, "The legalist puts his faith in himself, his ability to work his way to heaven. The liberal puts his faith in himself, his ability to work his way into heaven." I should say, "The legalist puts his faith in his ability to avoid certain sins. Don't drink, smoke, chew, or go with those who do," right? "The liberal puts his faith in himself, his ability to work his way to heaven, generally doing good things, working for, having to have for humanity." working for habitat for humanity, feeding homeless peoples, acts of benevolence and charity, all which are good things to do, but none of them will get you to heaven." "The grace-focused Christian puts his faith in Jesus and His ability to work our way to heaven." And again, I am scurrying on here because I have to, but I have not quoted Tim Keller tonight. Here you go. And every time I mention him, I hope you remember, he's been diagnosed, and we're not related, been diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. Please say a prayer for Tim Keller whenever you think of it, especially Wednesday nights. What does it mean to believe God? Abraham shows us it is to do three things. Whoops. Let me back up here. To know that reality is greater than how we feel or how things appear. To focus on facts about God. To trust the bare word of God. Let me leave those up for a minute. It's to know that reality is greater than how we feel or how things appear. It's to focus on facts about God, not our feelings about God. It's to trust the bare word of God. And in saying that, again, this is a Presbyterian pastor talking this way to you, but in saying that, man, you just, you have to know, you have to read God's Word. Read it. You can do it. Read it online, read it on your phone. Do it the old-fashioned way and read an old-fashioned Bible, however you can do it. But read God's Word. There is no substitute. It is the number-one mark of a disciple, that he or she is able to read God's Word for himself, herself. And then get involved in a good Bible-believing church. Hopefully, you're involved with Kendall Presbyterian. If you don't have a church, please, come on and make us ours. You're welcome with us. We'd be glad to be your home. And if you're going to another church and they're Bible-believing, great. Stay there, support them, be involved. If you're going to another church and they don't really believe the Bible, run, don't walk, get out of there. Go to a church that really believes something, believes the Scriptures, to be God's Word, because the Scriptures are what tell us about Jesus. Without the Scriptures, we would not know about Him reliably. So, study the Bible, read it for yourself, get involved in a good Bible study. It's all at your fingertips now. All right, I'll quit making my appeal to you to do that, but I hope, and I'm telling folks, I've been doing this, again, seriously, I've been reading the Bible pretty consistently for almost 50 years now, and studying it very seriously for over 30, maybe 40. As in, being instructed by great Bible teachers for 35 years anyway. And I still feel like I'm about that far into it, because every time I read something like Romans, I realize, "I'm still waiting around the shallows." I'm still waiting around the shallows. But there's no substitute, there's no shortcuts to reading it, studying it, and then maybe getting involved in a small group Bible study, a good Bible-believing church. All right, I rest the end, sorry. I got off on some other things. But I'll trust that there's something in there for you tonight. Please let me know if you have questions or comments. But you know what? Just let me know you're even engaging in these things. It would be good for me to hear from you. If you're seeing us Wednesday night, God bless you. I hope you'll be with us Sunday morning for our worship service at 11. If you're seeing us Sunday morning, I hope you stick around for the worship service, which should begin in about half an hour or so, I think, yeah. So, whatever you're doing, wherever you are, thanks for joining me tonight. Good night. God bless you.